Six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, July 26, 2021, 6:00 PM. Anamosa Library and Learning Center and via Zoom. 1.0 Roll Call.
Crump?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
McCarty?
Here.
Zumba?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Capron?
Note, all members are present. 2.0 Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. There is one council member that is, that is joining us virtually this evening. So I'll request a roll vote on all motion decisions. 3.0 Approval of Agenda. We do have representatives from the Lions Club with us this evening. So I would request an amendment to the agenda as it has been submitted, with Lions Club being the first under Old Business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of Lions Club being the first presentation under Old Business.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any council discussion? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote, please?
Under Old Business, I don't see them.
It's added.
Yeah, that's the amendment.
Anything else? Beth, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Motion to approve Agenda with Amendment Carried Unanimously. 4.0 Motion to Approve Minutes From The Following Meetings. 4.1 July 12, 2021, Regular City Council Meeting.
Move to Approve.
Second.
A motion by Jeff, second by Alan. Any council discussion on the minutes? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Crump?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes is submitted, carried unanimously. 5.0 Public Hearings. 5.1 Public Hearing On Proposed Amendment To The Anamosa Corridor Urban Renewal Area. I will open the public hearing.
Any comments or anything that you've heard?
I have had no written or verbal comments before the meeting. We did hold Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting, and they did approve the amendment. And I also held the consultation meeting for the county and the school district. We did not have any comment received for that meeting either.
Just the addition of the old building to the area?
Yep.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John, to close public hearing. Any council discussion? Any public comment? Beth, please.
McCarty?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve, motion to close the public hearing, carried unanimously. 5.2 Resolution To Declare Necessity And Establish An Urban Renewal Area Pursuiting To Section 403.4 Of The Code Of Iowa And Approve The Urban Renewal Plan Amendment For The Anamosa Corridor Urban Renewal.
Move to Approve. Move to Approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Council discussion? Any public comment? Beth, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Motion to approve, carried unanimously. 5.3 First Reading Of Ordinance Providing For The Division Of Taxes Levied On Taxable Property In The July 2021 Addition To The Anamosa Corridor Urban Renewal Area Pursuiting To Section 403.19 Of The Code Of Iowa.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion? Any public comment?
I did want to quick point out, I think Galen's mic might still be off.
Thanks Rebecca.
Sorry.
Beth, hearing no comments, would you please conduct a roll vote?
Zumba?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve, carried unanimously. 5.31 Possible Motion To Waive Statutory Rule For Second Reading Of Ordinance. Hearing no motion. We will allow the first, excuse me, the second reading to occur at the next council meeting. With that, there's no reason to proceed with 5.32. 6.0 Proclamations None. 7.0 Old Business. First up under Old Business would be Lions Club Representatives. If you would please come to the microphone and state your name, you have the floor.
Hello, Anamosa City Council, my name's Paul Feud. I'm from the Mount Vernon Lions Club, and I'm also the District Governor of District 90C. That includes Joan County and the city of Anamosa in it. We are looking forward to starting a Lions Club here in the city of Anamosa. Lions Club is 1.4 million members strong internationally, with over 200 countries and 46,000 clubs. We're looking to add Anamosa into that fraternity of clubs internationally, as well here in our district. What we're looking to do is to have a outside club coordinator come in and help us start a club here in this community. Looking at the date of mid-September area of doing that. What we plan on doing is going to various businesses and community centers here in Anamosa to look to help recruit new members, and also ask some advice and counseling from the council on who would be good members of the Lions Club here in Anamosa. Lions has an unofficial acronym, which means Loving Individuals Offering Needed Service. And to comment on some of the services that we offer, I turn the floor over to Jerry Edman, who will talk about the kidsight screenings that we already do here in Anamosa.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Edman, I'm from Mechanicsville. I'm a member of the Stanford Lions Club. I've been a Lion since 1978, and I say it proudly. The Iowa Kidsight Vision Screening Program For Preschool-Aged Children was started in the summer of 2000. We've been doing it for 21 years across the state. We have screened 630,000 children. Thirty-seven thousand of those children have been referred to eye doctors for potential problems. We started the screening, I personally did, here in Anamosa, doing a screening on September 11th at the WIC Clinic here in Anamosa, that same year. Needless to say, as the years went on, we added the Rainbow Daycare Center. I don't think that's in existence anymore, in '04. St. Paul's Lutheran Church Preschool, which doesn't exist anymore, in '04. The Anamosa Head Start, we started in '06. St. Pat's Elementary in '07. Strawberry Hill in '10. Kids Are Us in '12. How many times have I been here screening children? Five pages. How many children did we screen? Here in Anamosa, we have screened 2,266 children. A hundred and six of them have been referred to eye doctors. Two years ago, we screened 129 children here in your community, six of them referred. Last year, or a year ago, 128 with nine of them referred. This last year, because of the pandemic, Strawberry Hill didn't want us in their building. I understand that. We screened 75 children. How many of those were referred? I don't understand the numbers. Zero. I have been screening for, like I say, 20 years, my wife and I. I'm now 76 and looking to retire from that business. My wife, who has been with me most of those trips up here, now has medical reasons and can't do the traveling and the screening. Who's gonna take over? I hope that the new club here in Anamosa, this will be one of their first projects. I will help them get started. We have a little community down the road here. El Burnett. It no longer has Lions Club, sorry, Springville, no longer has a Lions Club. Who screens those children? Hopefully, Anamosa will step forward and do that also. So that's the one reason I'd like to see a Lions Club here in Springville, to take over the Iowa Kidsight Program. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
I will now turn over to Terry Durham, who will discuss a project that's going on currently in the Anamosa prison over here with eyeglass recycling.
Thank you. One of the things Lions are known for, if for nothing else, is eyeglasses. Recycling of eyeglasses, helping people who have vision impairment issues and things of that nature. One of the things we started approximately two years ago was the idea that we would bring all of our eyeglasses that are collected by the 300 Lions Clubs around the state of Iowa into Anamosa here, and the correctional facility over here would then provide the cleaning of those, cataloging those, and determining the prescriptions and things like that. And we were doing great guns until suddenly a little virus came up on the scene, and COVID-19 basically shut that project down due to some reshuffling within the correctional departments of the state of Iowa. And it has been shut down for quite, since then. And then, of course, there was a few issues that gained some statewide headlines that did not help the issue whatsoever. Our goal is if we can establish a club here, maybe we can reestablish that and turn this project completely over to the Lions of Anamosa to take care of that for us. Because those eyeglasses that you may have turned in or whatever ultimately end up with people in most likely third world countries. Most of the states in the United States do not allow recycled eyeglasses to be provided. So therefore, that's my selfish reason, is I could clean my office out of probably 5,000 pairs of recycled eyeglasses that are sitting there now. And with that, turn that over to a club here to take care of that for the state of Iowa. Thank you.
As you can see, the Lions Club of our area has a lot to offer this community, and we definitely know that there's a need in this community for service in the Anamosa area. That's it for our presentation. The one thing we asked is that, we asked for an endorsement to help start a club here in the Anamosa community. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation. Due to state code, we cannot make any decisions tonight. As it was not an agenda item. I'm sure individual council members will take your presentation under consideration and possibly reach out to you. Again, thank you for your time, and sorry that we cannot form any type of decision here tonight.
We've already endorsed them at the previous meeting. So that endorsement still, it still stands.
We were here a year still before.
Yes.
Things rolled loose.
Yes. It was right before. So yeah, so you do have the endorsement of the same council that's here now.
Thank you, and we appreciate what great you guys are running here, and that you would have a great day.
Thank you.
That's the plan.
7.1 Downtown Facade Project Update, Derek Lumsman.
Good evening, so I'm just here to update you on the CBG project. As you see, the next item on the agenda are some change orders. Over the last month, as we've torn into some more buildings, we found some more things that we didn't have to fix, and a few we did. So a lot of the building owners got credits on their property, so their overall amount will be coming down, as you can see on a couple of those. We have a couple more that are coming. We had a couple of clerical things we needed to finish, so you'll see those next month. But for the most part, there were a couple that added some work to their properties, some that needed colors. We had a couple of windows that we had to clear with the state because they were not historic the way we thought they were once we tore them out. But all these projects have been cleared with the building owners. So, but tonight, the city has to approve those. That's the main thing I'm here for tonight. A lot of the work has just been getting everything shored up and framed out and ordered. We have had to delay because the supply chain has finally hit the CBG project. They're projecting some of the window storefronts may be another three to four weeks delayed, but that won't delay the project from the final completion date of April 1st. So we're still on good track there. We knew there was some wiggle room built into that early schedule that they had. So we're hoping that, you know, hopefully by the end of August, first part of September, we'll start seeing some of that stuff roll in, and they'll be putting in those new storefronts and upper story windows and getting some of the painting and stuff done. So we'll be seeing some of the final renderings. You'll also be seeing renderings go up on our Facebook page, and we're hitting those out so people can see them. We're also putting renderings up on the building, so people that are in town, if they're walking by, can see what the building will eventually look like. So those are some of the things we're doing from the CBG perspective. Obviously, they're doing some stuff tomorrow, but then they'll be cleaning up and closing stuff down Wednesday, so everything's cleaned up and ready for rag break. Are there questions for me on the update?
Will the renderings be going up on all buildings before rag breaks?
Yep, that's our, we're gonna put them earlier, but we didn't want them ruined. So they're gonna be there, I think they're gonna be Wednesday.
So they won't last, they're not like vinyl.
They're not vinyl, it's, it's.
First green, they'll get, they'll get ruined, but.
Probably, but we'll have, we can continue to print them off, that's easy to do. But we wanted to make sure that they were out.
I think it's a good idea, so they don't come to town and be like, why is everything coming up?
Well, and I mean, Lieutenant Governor was here last week, and he didn't think it was run down. He thought, oh, it looks great, look at all the stuff that's happening. So most rag break people would probably think the same.
Well, yeah. Rag break is good, even there's local people that don't know what it's about, so.
Yep, so then keep in touch with our Facebook page to see some of those renderings. We'll keep putting them out there, they'll be on the buildings. We'll try to keep those updated as different buildings come down, and they put up, you know, different plastic or the storefront framing and stuff, we'll try to keep those updated.
Move to approve the changes as suggested by the documents in the email.
We are under 7.1, this is just an update. We'll need to venture into 7.2 to approve that.
Yeah, sorry, I kind of lumped them together when I was talking.
Just hold your motion for a minute, please Kay.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for Derek on the update? Any public comment? Thanks Derek for that update. 7.2 Discussion Possible Action On Changes, Change Orders For The Downtown Facade Project. Derek Lumsman.
Move to approve the change orders as presented.
Motion by Kay.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Alan. Any further council discussion or questions?
Derek, do you have like a total, I mean, looking through all this, like a total net change of what we're originally looking at to what the change orders, how it's been affect?
It should say it on each individual change order. They don't do it for an overall total. I think all said and done, it's somewhere around, don't quote me on it, but 20,000 in additions, but.
In total?
In additions, yeah. And then so many, so much in credits, but like I said, I don't know the exact number, but something around that. The biggest one went to Barners because we found additional asbestos.
So the additional things were found, specific buildings, would be the building owners?
Yep. But the city has to ultimately approve each change order, so. But they've all been through owner review.
How's that process work? Do you or the project manager go around to the individual business?
Yeah, so what happens is when they find something, it's a coordinated meeting between myself, the architect, and Tricon, and we discuss what it needs to be done, what some of the options are. And then if there's a price decrease or a price increase, or maybe a mix, they'll put the numbers together. I'll take them to the owner with usually both the architect and/or the contractor, and we'll have that discussion. They'll ask questions, we'll see if they have any, you know, concerns about it. And then we'll, if they approve it, then we'll get a change order status like the ones you have before you. So that, like I said, we had a couple that didn't get clerically done before your packet went out, and that'll be coming in your, probably your next packet. But that's usually the way it works.
Thanks. Derek, would you just please clarify, all the additional costs associated with the change order are the responsibility of the building property owners?
Correct, as they sign in their easements with the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Jeff, it looks like, just looking at this last one here, the total net is about $18,330 some dollars.
That's what I thought, I was.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what.
It's probably a change order seven, that'd be the last one of the packet.
Yeah, because it says previous change orders are $19,352, and then this one is a decrease of $1,027, so.
Is there any public comment or questions for Derek? Again, we have a motion by Kay, second by Alan, to approve the change orders that have been submitted. Beth, would you conduct a roll vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you Derek. Motion to approve, carried unanimously. 7.3 Discussion And Possible Action On Virtual Meeting Participation.
Well, in response to this, I would like to see us have people present and not do virtual unless it's a council member or a professional, somebody who is gonna charge to show up. But if anybody wants to voice any opinion or anything, I would like to see them in council chambers. That's my thought.
And that's really the open meetings we have always had. COVID changed it to where we're doing the Zoom, but this is putting it back to the way our meetings were. You're allowed to participate electronically as a council person, but it doesn't, we are not required to allow virtual participation by the public.
And we're gonna continue Zoom until at least December, so they can still watch and be a part of the meeting, except not actually voice an opinion.
You wanna leave it open? I mean, if something comes up where it's an issue where people have a conflict, but it's related to them, where they're even driving in their car, and they can call in. I guess they didn't have that option before, but since we have the technology in place for council people.
Well, I'm, I'm just, if it's somebody who has an item, they know it's on the agenda, they should schedule to be here. I mean, they would have had to before, so.
I did check with Patrick before putting the item on the agenda.
I think it's better to get questions answered, they're here in person, why, little bit better discussion, I believe.
I believe we had more people when the people were invited to come personally, rather than be on Zoom.
So then going forward, if we did this, the public agenda would not have the Zoom link, it would only be for.
No, we'll still have the Zoom link, because you can watch it. You just won't be able to raise your hand.
Yeah, we're still gonna.
You can still watch it live remotely.
Yeah, because we got that in place, what, a couple meetings ago, until December, January, I think. So the Zoom meetings are gonna continue. It's just, if you wanna ask a question, you should be here. So I'll make a motion to set the virtual meetings to view and observe only, unless it's a council member that, for whatever reason, is gone, or is a professional in some form that cannot absolutely make it, and it's an item that's critical.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. So if I'm hearing Rich your motion correctly, presenters need to be in council chambers.
If at all possible.
Unless for some reason they cannot.
And I'm gonna take that one step further. If they cannot, they need to clear it beforehand.
Any public comment on items on the agenda, you're saying, is required to come from the floor, not from virtue?
Yep.
We'll have to tweak our verbiage that goes out to public agendas, so they can clearly see it's just.
View only.
Going forward, you know, bold it or highlight it or something, because.
If, if COVID has had a positive for, of anything, it is that we have the ability to conduct meetings, whether business or council, in a virtual setting. I certainly understand the presenters being here, so you do get that direct interaction. I just not sure that any public comment has to be from council chambers. You know, we, we navigated with this for, I don't know, over 12 months. And I, I didn't really find it to be disruptive, there was some time delay. But I personally do not think that the public would need to be here to comment. You have made the motion, Rich. I understand how the democracy works, but I also wanted to state my opinion on it. Is there any other council discussion?
I'd like to see him come here personally, myself, because I, I like to be able to read body language and get a sense of their, uh, their actual feelings. And they can also tell how we feel about things. I think it's more personal. So I, I'm in agreement with, with Rich on this one.
I guess I agree with Brad someone. I mean, we had some bigger, um, I mean, you have your normal agenda, but back when we had the, uh, things with the intersection, we had people that weren't necessarily here that were, had good thoughts to bring forward, and they called in. And I think we're good points made, there were people that weren't, weren't able to be here in person, so.
My opinion is if it's important enough to be on the agenda, it's important enough for them to be here. I mean, I take my responsibility seriously. If they think it's important enough to be on the agenda, they should try to be here. I mean, that's just my opinion, so.
Let's just run with this and see how it works.
Well, and until it is approved, uh, stay the course, at least for this evening. Uh, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
Dusty Embry, six oh two Northland Street. I actually hadn't planned to comment, but I just, I guess I want you to consider young families, young mothers that may have valuable contributions that can't get away for a two hour length of time. I have, I'm away from my children tonight because I feel it's important to be here, but it's not easy. It's not easy to get away, and especially if there's an item later on in the agenda. So, you know, I just, I guess that's just something to consider, that not everybody has that flexibility and time. And that it is nice to be able to get different points of view from different segments of the community.
Thanks, Dusty. No other public comment?
There is one from, um, online. I am going to go ahead and ask Angela to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Angela Weincoff, um, two oh one Old Dubuque Road. Um, I feel like in two thousand twenty-one, the, the Zoom option has really opened the line of communication and allowed more people within the city to become more involved in items on the agenda. And as Dusty said, it's not always easy for, uh, people with young families or active families to be present because now you're making, um, people choose between spending time with their young children or attending their child sporting event. Um, and whether or not your item on the agenda is more important than their children. And I think that with the tech, technology that we have today, that, um, closing that line of communication is just unnecessary when, um, we should be trying to bring everybody together. And, um, I just think that it would be unfortunate if you took that, that opportunity away from citizens that can't be present.
Thank you, Angela. If there is no other public comment, I'll ask, I'll ask Beth to conduct a roll vote.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
No.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion carried on a five yes, one no vote. Seven point four, project status update from Snyder and Associates, Lindsey Beaman, Tim Wallace.
Um, just a quick question, clarification. Uh, does the previous motion go into effect immediately, or is that next meeting?
I would say next meeting.
Yeah.
What I thought would be, but I don't know the legal side to that. I don't see Lindsey or Tim in chambers. Doesn't appear Rebecca that they have joined us virtually.
Did anyone have any questions on the update memo? Um, I may be able to answer them.
Are we reaching out to them when they're on the agenda, or do they just miss it?
Um, yeah, usually I get, um, usually I have a discussion before the council meeting. Um, just sometimes there's no one that's on there that they're, they're here.
Like in this case, if we don't hear from them, can we put them on the next meeting? Just, I mean, I know you, and, and we'll just.
Well, this will change things. The last motion will change that.
But they're professional people, you're motionless.
It was exception for some professionals, not all.
Um, yeah.
I don't think we can really say something at all.
Well, it was, if it's going to be a, I can't remember the.
Oh, you did refer to travel, Rich.
Right, travel, yeah. If it's a, one of those that it's going to be, um, you know, hard. Let's say they're coming from Des Moines. If they're coming from Cedar Rapids, so.
That's my vote, but we're paying these guys a lot of money. I think we should take information from them any way we can get it, stay up to date.
Why?
Well, we're paying them a lot of money that they should be able to show up.
We're not their only customer.
No, but they, they've shown up in the past many, many times.
Because they really have a virtual update, they know I'm here.
I, I do know during a previous council meeting, we had had this discussion about getting these updates. And obviously one was provided.
Yep.
Uh, in, in hard copy format. I just don't recall from the meeting if we, I guess my expectation is that they would have presented this to us even on a hard copy submit. Is there, is there a way that we can?
Yeah.
Work that in, in the future? That, you know, they be present, or if they are, you know, out of the area, that they could at least remote virtually?
I mean, the, the memo is good, but like in my business, you do a memo, but there's always question, there's always further questions that, um, we might not have the answer for that they can provide, so. I just would like to see a regular update and hear from them in some, whether in, in person or virtual.
Is it something Beth would be entering to possibly a motion? That, or we just tell them they're expected?
Right. We'll just tell them. We'll just, I'll just let them know to tune in or show up.
I don't want to speak for the council. That's just my opinion. I believe that they should be available for these questions, if there is any.
Definitely. Need to know, I mean, as you know, I'm on Sycamore. There's questions I had up there.
Reflect, or it, yeah, it, it has to do with your.
Things I want to know what's going on.
Impact your life a lot more than it does in the sense of mine.
Yeah.
And I think, um, HR Green might be on here to answer the Sycamore Street questions.
Okay.
So, yeah, different, different.
Different one, that's right.
But also, you know, whether it is Snyder or HR Green, I, I would like to have them available.
I think they, for what they're doing, I think we need to have them available to ask questions. And if they can't make it in person, that's where they need to clear it in advance to let Beth know that you're going to be on.
Move forward with that direction, Beth. Thank you.
Yeah, it may, may be a thing like Friday before or something, reach out and say, hey, you're on the agenda. Any idea, I mean, can you make it? Great. If not, we'll. Whatever, just so we.
Okay.
So we know.
Were, was these, were these updates to come at the second council meeting in the month, or, I was thinking it was the first, but.
That's what they, she sent it to me for that, for the July twenty-sixth meeting.
Well, soon, I'd like to get consistent. If we want to have it the first meeting of the month or the second meeting.
Well, it's, it seemed like originally they started the first and then, um, Snyder missed, and they sent for the second. Now it seems like that's all they've done is just rolled it to the second.
Maybe find out one word. Maybe they have something kind of set on one of those.
I can find out.
Works better.
Finds what's working better, yeah. Okay.
Not a lot's happened project wise, um, other than the DOT gave them some different guidance on the roundabout, so that was about, that was about it for the update anyway. It was just the DOT guidance for the.
Is, is that the one that I see the DOT is going to fund the survey?
No, that's on the next one. Yeah, yeah.
On the Old Dubuque.
All the.
This is.
Five corners.
A five-way style.
But on the Old Dubuque Road extension, there's a planned informational meeting in August, it sounds like.
Correct. So that would have been under my update. But yeah, we're planning on having the, the open house informational, um, public meeting, August eleventh from three to seven here at the library. That one was on me.
Feel free to review it.
Yeah, August eleventh, three to seven.
That's open to the public?
It is. It's definitely open to the public. It's for the public to come in and at least see the plans and ask any questions they may have about the project.
So it's my, it won't be like a presentation before, it'd just be a drop in, ask your questions.
Yep. There'll be some large draw, um, maps set out of the project, and they'll be here to answer questions. That's really the only new, we have to do that step first before we continue to move forward with that, that project.
And you probably said, I didn't, is here or City Hall?
Here.
Okay.
It'll be here in this room.
Okay. Without Facebook or something, it gets closer?
Yes, uh, I should, um, I'll get in contact with Jake too, and hopefully do a, maybe a display ad in the newspaper.
Any additional further discussion on seven, item seven point four? Seven point five, project status update from HR Green, Andrew Marsh, Josh Scanlon.
Or possibly Todd. No, I do not tie.
There's no representatives from HR Green in council. Is there any reps from HR Green who have joined us virtually this evening? Council, do you have any questions or comments on what was submitted in the packet?
Yeah, I got questions. Yeah.
For Sycamore Street.
Yeah, yes.
Is something you want Beth to take back to John, or would you?
No, I just want to explain some of the stuff they're doing on that corner and the driveway and that, what's, what's going to take place? With the slope of the drive to the street, if they're moving four feet in, what all is it going to change with the angle of the driveway to the garage?
Yeah, and the street will be higher, so they are raising the elevation of the street.
So they're going to have to raise the whole driveway then.
So.
That's, I just, you know, wondering what's going on.
The north side.
Can you come to the mic?
Shane Round, uh, city superintendent. So they're going to raise the north side of the road for sure. That's the side that we have the problem with. Not necessarily are they going to raise your side, the south side, but they are going to have to raise the side on the north because right now, the, that's what's causing our problem is our, um, gutter system is sloughing off. And so it's collapsing. So that's why they have to raise the north side. They're not necessarily going to raise your side. And then they're going to cut it down, the middle down, and make it a little gradler slope than the, the super slope that you have now. And it's going to make the sidewalks better. It's going to make everything better. Um, I haven't talked to these guys since I got it done because we've been super busy, but I know that they, they knew the, what I was taking in. I didn't want it to look like a crap show. I wanted it to look nice, and I told them that. And so they spent a lot of time making the design sort of work so that everybody's happy up there. It's one block, and this is one, I want it to look nice. Not just for you, not just for these guys sitting here, but for the people behind me. Someday, we'll have a sidewalk all the way to that, to that five-way. And, and we have to start somewhere, and this is where we started. They're not changing too much on your side, John. They're going to change your front steps to the west. And then they're going to change your driveway just a tad bit. But hopefully everything will run off perfect down the hill to the, to the, uh, east.
What I'm saying, the bottom of the drive goes to the curb.
Yeah, but it's slow.
Four feet, they're just going to be flat?
You're, yeah, it'll be flatter, but not too flat.
Well, you're going to either have to raise my drive, I'll have to get raised.
Maybe a little bit, but it's, you're.
I mean, that's just what I'm wondering.
You're going to like it a lot more. You're not going to have that bump coming in, I don't think.
But if his driveway is changing, who's paying for it?
It's already in the bed.
His whole driveway?
Every, every, every driveway and alley entrance is in the bed.
I'm not talking just entrance, all the way to the garage, if that has to change, who's paying for it?
We just have to pay for what they tear out. So to, probably to the sidewalk.
Okay.
It'd be a partial new driveway.
Right, but what, if, if there is a need to go past that point, is that on the homeowner? Has that been looked at?
It has not.
On the north side, there's no driveway, it's just the alley.
Right.
Right, I'm just.
But the south side, there's only two driveways.
Three.
Three driveways.
But just.
I don't think it's going to affect past the, past the sidewalk.
Ask that question.
I will.
And then, I know you don't, Shane, but to the west, they're going to put a sidewalk to Davis. It kind of looks like that in the draw.
Yeah, so there'll be ADA to Davis.
So, okay, they're gonna, I don't know how far half to lower that. There's going to be a water shut-off that's about that deep in the ground there. If that's lowered a couple of feet, that's going to be, I'm just, that's just questions I'm wondering.
I'm thinking they've already taken all this into consideration.
Uh, I mean, I know you didn't. Yeah, I'm just, just questions I have, you know, what's going on.
They're worried. I mean, they've, they've done their homework.
Yeah, you know.
Never asked this before, and, you know, John, there's only two driveways, but if it possibly is where they're going to redo the driveway, and I think it was me, and my driveway was, like I was thinking about redoing it to coordinate something, so it's not so choppy, at least, I mean, it's just two houses, you might, and one, one I know is rental, basically just one owner occupied, but just maybe had the discussion and say, hey, we might have to change it. Any thoughts on if you were going to redo your driveway that they have a heads up, so they could maybe, I don't know how we, how we've worked that. Has occurs if they pay, pay the extra, so they'd have not a choppy driveway, or they get a new dri, all new driveway, and they could pay the, the remainder?
So I'm doing that with, um, the alley behind T and D's. I've went to the, all the store, store owners and told them who was doing the project, and just kind of dropped them a note that if they wanted to do their part to get ahold of the people that we have contracted.
Because they're already there, it's going to, never going to get done.
Right, so I can, I can run a letter up to those people.
Probably going to be just the house in the corner of Williams and Sycamore, that old rental place. I mean, that'd be the only one, because the other one.
And this is a year out. I mean, we're looking at next spring.
Yeah.
So.
Questions, wonder.
Well, but now's the time to plan.
Yep.
Yeah, you might send a letter to the owner. And that one in between is, it's a rental, it's not, the owner doesn't live there, but you can send a letter to both them.
Okay.
Just, I don't know, I have no idea what the driveways are like, but, and I appreciate it, was, it was me.
I'll send the letter.
Thank you, Shane.
Yep.
With these, with the questions, it just enhances the reason to have representative from these, uh, architects, uh, on the project side here. So I think that everything. architects on the project side here. So I think that everything we had mentioned earlier should apply to H R Green to this project planning as well. Is there any public comment on item seven point five? Eight point zero, new business. Eight point one, review and approval of plans and specs for the Sycamore Street project and place these documents on file.
Want to approve plans, inspects, if we have questions.
I'm personally thinking it ought to be tabled until next meeting and have somebody present to answer those questions. So I'll make a motion to table it.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff, to table eight point one to the next meeting where representatives from H R Green can be present to, uh, field questions. Any further council discussion? Any public comment? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimous. Eight point two, resolution setting public hearing on proposed plans and specifications, proposed form of contract and estimate of cost for the Anamosa Sycamore Street project for August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, six P M, the Anamosa Library and Learning Center.
Um, you do not have to make a motion on that one since we've tabled the other one.
It has to follow.
They have to go together. Yeah, we'll have to push the let date too, so.
They don't have to be separated by a meeting at all. They can, one can follow the other on the next agenda. That's my question.
Um, it, it could, um, we can always put to set the resolute, set the resolution on the next agenda with the approval of the plans and specs. If there's any delay, I'll just have wasted a publication, so.
So there should be a motion to table this one as well. Or does it carry onto the previous?
Or just no motion, if necessary. You can move to table if you want to.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John, to table the public hearing to the following meeting. Any further council discussion? Public comment? Beth?
Mockart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimous. Eight point three, discussion and possible action on appointment of Dan Frank as Anamosa Fire Chief is recommended by the Anamosa Firefighters Association. And entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Jeff, further council discussion.
I've got a question of qualifications.
Dan, would you please approach, uh, state your name and your address?
Dan Frank, sixteen seventeen, Meadowridge Court. Qualification. The qualifications for fire chief, uh, has to be on a command staff for minimum of two years. And if I'm not mistaken, has to be firefighter one certified. Uh, I've been on command staff three, at least three years and firefighter one certified. Then it's voted on by the membership. Every July for chief.
Okay.
Only a veteran firefighter?
Twelve years. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Public comment? Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Approval of Dan to be Anamosa's new fire chief carried unanimous. Eight point four, discussion and possible action on appointment of Chris Minor, Assistant Fire Chief as recommended by the Anamosa Firefighters Association.
So I'm o.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Kay, council discussion. Public comment? Beth?
Mockart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Motion to approve Chris Minor as Anamosa's next assistant fire chief carried unanimous. Eight point five, review and approval of change order for color of the exterior, fire station addition and current building. Representatives from Anamosa Fire Department. Please restate your name and address.
Uh, Dan Frank, sixteen seventeen, Meadowridge Court. I don't know, we're gonna start with this, but basically, uh, within our fire department, we created a little building committee to discuss ideas and thoughts of the fire station. I think reviewing through the packet that was sent out to the council members, that at one point in time, there was conversation, the building or the new addition matching the new, or matching the current fire station. The current fire station is a, the metal that's been on there, probably been on there for twenty-some years, it's faded. There's two different brands of metal in that building. A lot of our discussion within the fire department, it'd be nice to update the color. Now's the time to do it, like doing the addition. Uh, I think there is also some miscommunication between, uh, the previous fire chief in our fire department and with the city here on our color selections and whatnot. I think that's something that we're trying to get resolved here tonight on what the, the color would be. Now's the time to, to change the color of the fire station, otherwise it'll be the same color it is now for the next thirty years. Did this, did they drop off color samples to you?
They did not.
So, Sean Jensen's supposed to drop them off here today. Uh, the color that we're thinking was, it's called Hawaiian blue. Basically, it's, the, a lighter blue likes on the ball diamonds that you see around town. Uh, it's a popular color. It's a, it's the Raider, it's a Raider color with a blue and white. So that was, that was our thought within the fire department of now's the, now's the time to change the color that the color was to change.
It would be, it would be nice as far as the, yeah, community, the, you know, Raider, because green and tan is not really significant to animals, huh? Blue would be nice. I think this.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Jeff.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Tight and blue, I think would be nice to freshen it up and a little more community identity with the Raider colors. I think this color scheme is, oh, some of the J and P buildings had that, that shade of blue now.
So are, are you looking at predominantly blue with white trim or predominantly white with blue trim?
It'd be predominantly blue with white trim. The garage doors would be white also. Basically, it gives the fire station more of a modern look than the data that we have going on right now. If you were to go along, go ahead.
Will the color fade as it has on the L C C building?
It will.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, maybe my memory doesn't serve me, but I feel like the L C C's never been like the royal blue. I feel like it's always, I was small and that, it, my, my memory serves me that it's always pretty much been that color. I don't think it's ever been the color of Dan's shirt. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you guys are older, would remember, but.
In my age, I don't remember.
I don't know.
I didn't mean it like that, but.
Wow.
I move that we, uh, throw Jeff out.
That's low.
I resemble that.
True.
But low.
Poor wording, but.
When was the L C C?
It was like nineteen ninety years, around there. So it's thirty years old.
It's thirty years old. Um, a lot of the newer paints that they're using on metal will last longer and not fade as much as the older stuff did. So you'll see that with metal siding, vinyl siding, even, uh, on, on sheet metal, the paint they're using now will fade less than what it did thirty years ago.
Well, it, it'll be three colors if you try to match that anyway.
Right.
And the, that city facility there is probably one of the first buildings that people will see when you come into town. And how much more would, have you looked into the cost of finishing the, the, the building, the existing building with that?
Uh, we have not. Uh, I know that would be an added expense, but the thought was now's the time to do it. Cause even if, even if you stuck with the same color scheme that you got going now, it will never be a hundred percent match.
No.
Because it's even a different metal, or metal profile being used also. So, uh, I think down the road be, would entertain reskining the exterior of our existing facility or even for a temporary deal of just painting it, so it'd match. But, uh, thinking forward to the future, what the next thirty years has to hold for the fire station, now would be the time to, to change the color.
Blue's always gonna be relevant in the community. I mean, back then, the popular, you know, nineties was, hundred green was everything, you know, and that's gonna go. And now it might be tan or gray, but blue's gonna kind of be a staple, you know, it's always gonna be relevant and probably not date itself. My only thought, I, I don't know what the color difference is, if it's the same where you picked these colors. The Hawaiian blue's good. I don't know if you, and if you've seen the new blue track building out in the commercial park. Now, to me, that's like the royal, like blue, blue, which I think is sharp. I don't know, I don't know cost-wise, that versus the lighter blue.
Did you ask any of the neighbors what they think about it?
No, we did not.
We had several discussions about the color of the building while we were in the planning phase. And during those discussions, it was said that we weren't gonna change the color of the building because we weren't gonna add the extra expense of changing the existing building. I'm not sure where that changed or how that changed, but there was time to discuss this before the plans and specs were approved. But that wasn't the discussion that was had. I myself asked the question several times if we were going to stay with the same color and was told that we were. So when I saw the change order, I was quite surprised by that it had already been submitted to the architect. And I'd just like to also state that that should not be the process. And as far as the building committee goes, I'm not sure what they're working on now. But I would expect them to report that to me before going to the architect with anything.
So where, how much does it add to the cost?
It doesn't add, it doesn't change the cost. I'm not sure if that's why our building's on the delay that it is now. If changing the color moved us from November to February, if that was something else. It doesn't change the cost.
And then who pays for the reskining of the existing building?
That was, basically, so the previous chief, he was supposed to have had these discussions with you and communicated back forth between our little building committee and with you guys. Obviously, that communication didn't happen and the ball was dropped. So basically, we're trying to pick up and move forward here. So with reskining the, the existing facility, I guess it's open enough for discussion on what the thoughts are with that.
I'd be curious to know what the, the extra cost would be on the existing building. And if there's any possibility that you can work something with the contractor as far as the cost. Both of those issues.
We talked about the cement and resurfacing and stuff, that if they're there and they have it, that's always, anytime, no matter what you're doing, like they're doing it with the tools and the labor, it's always gonna be more reasonable to do it as opposed to waiting and bringing everybody back in, the equipment back in.
So when we discussed changing the color and reskining the other building, it was gonna be a change order, which was gonna cost an additional amount for the architect to put it into as an option. So we decided not to do that because we were already so far over budget. So if the city's going to be paying for that, we need to have an estimate of cost with this change order for the reskining of the other building. I was told by you that this fire department association was going to take care of changing the color on the existing building. Is that no longer the option?
I did not promise that we would take care of the cost. I know the fire department, the membership of the fire department is willing to help out to help take care of some of this. If it's extra legwork we gotta do, if it's something where we gotta help put the tin on, as to occur the whole expense of that, I don't think it's fair to the fire department membership. I know we got talented guys in our fire department that would be willing to help put the tin on the building or help us with the painting of the building. But as to occur the whole cost of it.
That was not the discussion we had. That's fine.
Well, I, I can tell you that I've already gotten a couple of phone calls about changing it to blue and white and they, the people were against it. They, they don't wanna go to a blue and white color scheme. So I'm just putting that out there too. I know Jeff, you like it, but some people think we've got enough blue and white. They wanna go to something else.
Green is just not really, I mean, it's supposed, it's one of our more showcase buildings we're gonna wanna pass the, we're gonna drive by. I think it should be something that we're, I don't know, if you go to put an addition on your house and you got an ugly color you don't like, that's, that's gonna be the time when you're gonna do it. You're not gonna wait and decide your, decide your addition one color and then, and then go and have two different colors in your house.
I'm, I'm just saying, they were against blue and white. They, they thought we should go more of a neutral color, but.
Next time it's neutral, I just, I, I don't think that what's on there is particularly appealing.
I know you wanna change it and I know you wanna do something, but like I said, I'd like to know what the cost is, but I, I got a, a question too. What is just the cost of just the tin? I built my own building and me and two, three other guys tinned the whole thing. And it's just a question to take the screws out and put new tin up.
Yeah. No, the existing, the existing fire station would be an easy project to re-tin.
So I mean.
Not a whole lot to.
Is, is it possible that you have, uh, people there that are capable of doing that kind of work?
Yes.
You could save yourself a lot of money doing that, but again, uh, like Beth said, the cost incurred is a big, big question here and I'd like to know what it would be. The contractor do it or maybe you guys could do it yourselves. I know that sounds like a lot of work, but, uh, and I know it is.
Normally, when you have a project, it's usually, well, almost half the labor and half the materials, usually pretty accurate.
That's what they do with cement too. It's pretty, pretty steep.
One thing I'd like to do is I'd like to see a sample before I make any kind of a decision on it.
I, I agree for something that long-term and to.
Well, maybe consult with the neighbors and see what they think. I don't know that I would want to live across the street from a blue building depending on the shade.
Well, colors are options, I suppose. I understand why you're talking about doing that. I'm gonna be open to it, but the thing is, like I said, I'd like to know what, what it's gonna cost to get into that. And if you guys are capable of doing it, how much is just the tin itself and the, and the screws that you need? Sweat equity is, is pretty cheap that way.
Right. Well, the other question, I mean, the other question was, that we have brought up as a membership, if you were to stick with the existing colors and tried to ma, and match that, what was the plan to tie the two buildings together? Cause they would never match.
You won't match it.
They'd never match in the first place.
You won't match it.
They only tie together on that backside on the one corner. You're only gonna see on the front, just above the overhead doors. We had a lot of discussions about this, about how much of the building you're gonna see and you're gonna see the one side, but you're not, you're only gonna see that when you're looking at the garage doors on this side. So you're only gonna have the tin above here and here. We just paid to have the tin redone on the roof after the dry shell, six hundred bucks. That's all gonna be thrown away if you change the color. I mean, there's, there's just been a lot of things happening since then and it's not like the chief was the only one in those meetings. So I don't like the blaming someone else for whatever's happened. My phone is on all day long and I answer it. So there, there's been opportunities to have that discussion if, if they didn't think that the message was being relayed. So I've just, that's all. I'd like to know what the warranty is also for the, the color resilience, how long before they're gonna replace it? Because we've not had the best luck of anybody replacing a faded tin building. So I, I kinda know how that goes. Yeah, but it's out of warranty. We're not covering it for that kind of fading or whatever it is. So I mean, we did discuss how much of that building's gonna touch the other part of the building and how noticeable it's gonna be. I think Shai Pattery did a good job of trying to match that as best they could. I don't think it'll be that much of a noticeable difference.
Well, we did good, good discussion on the topic. What direction would the council like to go at this point?
Well, I'd still like to see the samples. I'd like to see what it looks like before.
And the cost.
And, and the cost. So I'm gonna make a motion to table this until we can get more information.
Second.
Was that you, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ritz, second by Alan to table, eight point five regarding color change order. Any other council discussion on that motion?
Just to, just to clarify, the metal color on the addition, it's the same price no matter what color. Like whether we pick, go with the existing or we're changing.
That's what this says.
The, the additional cost would come from reskining the existing.
As far as I know, again, I was not part of that conversation, so I can't verify that. And I also would need to know if that building's been ordered with that color. We need to, I'll be in touch with Shai Pattery to have that order stopped until the color decision has been made.
Is there any public comment regarding this topic? Start with those that are in chambers. Rebecca, do we have any public comment from those who've joined us virtually?
Uh, no one's letting me know so far. But they can send me a chat or raise your hand if you'd like to my attention.
Not seeing or hearing any. Beth, would you conduct a roll vote on the motion to table?
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimous. Dan, thanks for being present.
Awesome. Thank you, please.
Eight point six, discussion of possible action for leaving the parklet in front of Tyler and Downing in place from July twenty eighth through the thirtieth.
So previously, we had the motion when we approved the parklet for the season to remove it from the twenty eighth to the thirtieth. So that is the reason for the wording on this consideration. I had asked for the parklets to be left in place if we hadn't sold those vendor spaces just because of the amount of work that the street department has to do to prepare for RagBri. It would have been one less thing they would have had to done the week before or the few days before. Two of the parklets were requested to be removed permanently. So Shane has removed them. He removed them last week on Friday, I believe. And I did talk to the, the restaurant owner that has the adjacent property. He had, he was clear that it was not his reserved space, that it was just a seating area for the public. We did have the discussion that the parklets were initially presented as a way to enhance the downtown by the hometown pride group and that it was to enhance, you know, make downtown more attractive. So his comment to me, which I find valid, it was that, isn't this, why would we take the parklets away when that was the point for them to make our downtown more attractive, especially if we're showcasing our town for RagBri? So again, um, he's not using it as, as his own private seating area or anything like that. I believe we were just gonna put other seating in that area. I, I don't know that for sure, cause I haven't been involved in any of those discussions. So I, I don't really know that. I just know from the vendor map that that area was blank. So I would request that we don't move the parklet, but again, whatever you decide is fine.
Well, with that, if it's gonna be seating for anybody, and I know Dirk, if that's what he said, he'll, he'll honor that. I really don't see any reason to move them. If there's no vendor that's gonna be set up in front there, I personally would.
This, yeah, I mean, on that side of the street, it's gonna be his people. I mean, that's the only really, I mean, it's right in front of his place, so it's gonna benefit him the most and not, it's right in front of his restaurant.
Yeah, but how?
It's the closest to it.
Well, but it may not, it may be anybody could sit there. It doesn't have to be somebody that's from his restaurant.
But he's, I don't know, he's getting a built in thing that, I mean, he didn't pay any vendor fees. There's other businesses that have to pay to be in front of their own business.
But he doesn't have to pay a vendor fee.
Yeah, exactly. That's made me think about that.
No, he doesn't have to because Betty Wymer said, if it's an existing business and they're using it, they don't have to pay a vendor fee.
Then why did we have that?
No, that's what she said.
Why did we have the motion before to keep them in place? Then if we're gonna rescind it?
Well, because she said if it was like Family Foods and they had that wagon out front when they were serving lunches, they would not have had to pay a vendor fee. She said that.
I think she did say that.
So if that's the case, they don't have to pay a vendor fee because it's part of their normal business. They did it last year. They're doing it this year.
That would be fine, except for there was a clause in the motion that said that those, just like for Pumpkin Fest. So if people want them back for Pumpkin Fest, we're gonna drag them all out for Pumpkin Fest because people said they want them?
No, once they're gone for the year, they're gone. But in this scenario, from what Betty said, they don't have to pay a vendor fee for it.
As representative of the RagBri committee, yes.
Yes. So Leanna Boone, um, just because as of right now, there's nothing marked in that space. I think Jeff knows from being involved in Pumpkin Fest. Things come up. We have to switch vendors. There's limited electricity around there. We've had to do it several times for Pumpkin Fest. If something comes up and we have a paying vendor that needs a spot, are we supposed to just tell them, no, I'm sorry, I can't accommodate you?
How many vendors do you have right now?
We have, um, total of twenty, twenty on Main Street. Some of them have two or three spots plus five to six, um, nonprofits and churches that are not on Main Street. No matter what is said, it looks like it is exclusive to T and D because of the seating that's out there. So what's gonna happen if, you know, and if there's only what people can sit there, six people? Even if we needed it for, um, if we just wanted to put picnic tables in there, we could put three picnic tables in that space. We have people that are pulling trailers and it's gonna make it very hard for paying vendors to get in and out of those spaces.
We're being functional. I mean, if you put picnic tables there, you could get probably eighteen, twenty people sitting there as opposed to six with those three tables.
Can you just put the picnic tables in the parklet? I mean, I don't think he cares if his chairs are there. Again, I, I understand, but there's been some other, I've had a few other comments about other places having not the same opportunities for outdoor service areas and granted that it's come up just today, so it's a little late in the game, but there were certain things offered to other businesses that weren't offered to all of them. So as far as outdoor service areas, so I, you know, if we're talking about exceptions being made, there were other exceptions that were made.
Well, nothing was offered to anyone. We had, we had discussions with people that came to us and asked questions. And the, the only two people that we approved are the people that did come and speak with us. We would have listened to anybody, but that wasn't the case. So if there's somebody else, we don't know about that. It just doesn't seem fair that we're making an exception for one person. When it was clearly stated in your May, I think it was May tenth, which I sent an email to all you stating that they were gonna be removed temporarily, temporarily from July twenty eighth to the thirtieth. So you asked us to trust you a while ago. Now we're asking, or you asked us to trust you now. We're trying to do that. We're asking you just to stick by the decision that you made on May tenth.
Well, I could go further on trust right now. But that's not part of this discussion. Because truthfully, there's been a lot of trust that, in my opinion, has been broken coming towards the city. But that's neither here nor there right now. But my que, one of my questions, I thought your vendor shut off was what, May fifteenth, May, June first?
June first.
But you're still accepting vendors?
We are not.
So if there's nobody there, then you don't have a need for it for a vendor.
But I didn't say new vendors. I said if we have to shift. There are things that come up where we might have this mapped out and it might work perfect on paper, but some of these vendors we haven't seen before. So we may have to shift them around. Jeff and Sharon Minger have worked very hard on games. Our plan was to put some of those games on Main Street down where the crowd is.
How many, how many empty spots do we have yet?
In that area, there might be, I don't know, four or five total, but we also need places for seating. But the point is, people have paid us vendor spots to be in there. It should apply to everybody. Shouldn't make an exception.
It's really the city's parklet though. It's really our parklet. Like we pick it up and we can tell them they can't have it. Like it's not, it doesn't belong to them. It's not their property. So I mean, I, I just want you to stop thinking about it as their parklet. It's just seating.
I, I think part of it is that it's just, it gets.
Excuse me, state your name.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dusty Ambry, six oh two Northland Street. I'm on the RagBri committee with Leanna. You know, this is the eleventh hour. We're tired. It's Thursday. You know, this event is Thursday and part of that, you know, the beautification, yes, it is, it's beautiful. It's not gonna be beautiful on Thursday. It's gonna be in the way. It's gonna be, it's, it's just gonna get in the way. You know, bringing picnic tables in, it's gonna impede, just even if that was picnic tables there. We don't plan to put a big food thing in front of Dirk's business. We don't, we don't wanna do that. But even just having those there is an impediment to us pulling vendors in, pulling big trailers in. It's a hazard. I mean, the plan was that they were gonna be removed. We kind of at the beginning of this thought, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna take those in for those months before. And okay, so they agreed to move them. Okay, good. We won't have to worry about that on RagBri day. So it was just assumed that that was something we didn't have to worry about anymore. We weren't gonna have to worry about bringing trailers in. They were gonna be gone. Now they're gonna, now they're gonna be there potentially and we're gonna have to work around him and we're gonna have, you know, yes, we might put picnic tables there. But we won't have to work, you know, we won't have to carry the picnic tables around those parklets. I mean, they're not heavy or they're not unheavy picnic tables, some of the ones we're getting. It's just another impediment. It's just something else that is changed that's different. Um, and like Leanna said, the games, you know, Minger's been working really hard on these games and we do wanna mix them in and have that opportunity. So, you know, I think when we say how many spots are empty, well, it's not, it's not like there's like, here's a spot, you know, I mean, it's, it's Main Street. There's gonna be people everywhere. You know, beyond our booths and our vendors, we have RagBri bike shops. We have RagBri, you know, sales booths. We have all these other things that are gonna be there. There's not going to be empty space. And I understand that these are, this is not Dirk's space, these parklets, but in that case, it just would be so much handier to have them moved. It's just gonna, they're just gonna get in the way and be an impediment to our moving things in.
So if everybody would have decided they wanted to keep them out, would we have stuck to our original motion and taken them down for RagBri? If Tucker's and whoever else all wanted them, would we have stuck to our motion of taking them down and putting them back afterwards?
I requested that we not take them down. If there weren't gonna be enough vendor places sold, that why would we go to the extra work and expense of removing them and hauling them back out if those vendor spots weren't full? I don't know if that second, is the block in front of the bank full? Cause I mean, you've kind of got them concentrated before the plan was to spread them out farther.
So those two sides of the streets will be the RagBri or required to give them,
Right.
one hundred feet each for the bike shops and then a hundred feet.
Which is closer to the beer garden. I'm talking about down by Larry's. Like we've got that whole extra block down there. It didn't look like there was much down there at all.
There won't be a lot of food vendors. We tried to keep those more towards the.
So originally, I was told the plan was to spread them out farther because we were still a little bit COVID then and we were gonna spread, you were gonna spread the vendors out farther down Main Street.
But there can't be a lot of electrical vendors. In fact, the one that's there is using for his electricity in his office. So even for Pumpkin Fest, we, we keep our electrical vendors up more central on Main Street.
I just think, not, not so much as just RagBri vendors, but just more as, I mean, I think we should be decisive. If we, if we make a motion and pass, I think, I think we should stick to, I don't think we should, you know, hope we made that motion, but we, we go back on it all the time. I think, unless there's a really important reason, I think, I don't think we should undo our motions that were made and votes that were passed.
Well.
Or we're kind of contradicting ourselves.
I don't, I don't see it that way. I see it as if somebody has a specific request, then we ought to at least have a discussion about that request.
What you've done with the other outdoor service areas, you've granted exceptions for. So there has been exceptions. So let's not act like this is the first thing that we're ever talking about that's been a request, cause it's not, it's not.
Who did this request? Who submitted this request?
T and D. Well, they didn't actually, well, they submitted, they were just like, why are we taking it down? When it's still seating. If seating is an issue, it'll at least be shaded seating. It'll have a canopy over it where we won't have any other seating that has a canopy as far as I know.
The canopies, they're obviously Dirk's, that's not the city's, right?
Correct. So they aren't logoed or anything, but.
Sorry. If any of that stuff gets damaged, then who's responsible?
It's his. It's his.
And if, I mean, we are gonna have fifteen thousand bikers through town. If somebody falls.
I told him that. So, um, as far as the liability for the blocks, they're not any more of a liability now than they are when they're out all year. And as far as navigating around them, we have trucks and cars that, I mean, it's on highway. And as far as navigating around them, we have trucks and cars that, I mean, it's on Highway sixty-four. Both of those parklets are. We navigate the, around them all the rest of the summer, so I'm not sure I understand that argument with the navigating around them. I understand that the vendors are going to pull their things in and out differently, but those vendors are used to pulling them in and out of everywhere else. I'm not sure that some, you know, one parking spot that's blocked is going to make that much of a difference. I, that's all. I mean, we can pick them up or leave them out, whatever. It's not.
It's, I mean, it's fifteen thousand extra bikers in town that don't normally come down Main Street. I guess it's just a decision was made that we were counting on. It seems fair to us, to the people that have put a lot of energy into this, planning this, trying to make this success, and to the other business owners who have paid. It seems more fair to remove it. I understand it's a hassle and I'm, and I'm sorry for that hassle. There's been a lot.
I'd like to make two points. One of them is that you're, 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 I'll leave yours for the second one. We did put ourselves in a position because of the motion and, and what we did May fifth. I will say that. And that seems to have set a precedent and everybody is standing behind it and pointing fingers towards us. I understand that also. But your argument that you're going to have trouble getting your, your vendors parked, what's going to happen when you get five or six vendors stuck in certain spots on their street and you, now you got to work around them. It's the same as that parklet. So that's a poor argument. The only argument that you may have, and I'm sitting here in agreement with you on this, is that we made a motion. That's something we should be thinking about, too. But I don't think we're harming you by leaving that there. I, I went downtown and looked at it. I've been getting some conversation with some people, too. I don't see the problem you're talking about. And it does look nice down there. And if I was one of those bikers and I was walking down to the other end of the street and I'm tired and I'm, I'd go in there and sit. And I do understand the, the idea that everybody's for some reason pointing it out that it belongs to Tyler Downing, but it doesn't. And the only way that you could say that it does is if he goes out there and starts serving people, but he can't. Because we can, we, we would, we would interfere in that. That's our job, to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to. The only, and if somebody comes out of his restaurant with the food and they sit down there, that's their prerogative. But that doesn't mean that just down the street, somebody else comes out of another place or somebody from the vendor across the street comes over and sets in it. It's there for the bikers and that's it. It's the city's. Beth is right on that part. So we're kind of cut between a rock and a hard place here, guys. We can't really tell our street department start, we got to go down there and load that stuff up. They've got enough to do to start with. Let's just work around it. Let's just, let's, we can make this, that parklet is not going to ruin our, our, our fun RagBri day. It's not, guys, it's not. And if you have trouble getting around that parklet, just think what you're going to have to do trying to maneuver all the others to come in later. They got to get in between the ones that are already there. It's the same thing. So that's a poor argument and I'm not going to buy that. But that being said, we did put ourselves in a position, guys. We voted to take them out. And I don't think that I, and I take part of blame for it. I didn't think far enough ahead on this. Beth has a very good point. It's not hurting a darn thing there. And you had, Leanna made, made a very eloquent argument about bringing these parklets, parklets in and getting them set up out there at the time that when we first started talking about it.
I, and I think they're great.
And, and that's the biggest reason, I think, is to stay there.
But if you remember, I also stood up here in April at a meeting and I was asked about the parklets and I said I wasn't going to request them because of RagBri, because of all the construction downtown. And the construction does take up a lot of parking.
But we've got a lot of time, we don't have much time left. And I, I don't think this is worth this much trouble. I think, let's just, let's, we're all in this together. Let's just do this and let go of it. It doesn't belong to Tyler Downing.
When did, when did they take the other ones down?
Friday.
And the other T and D's was not taken out because Dirk came out when they were going to do it and.
No, I think he had submitted a request earlier.
And, and by rights, they should not have come out on Friday. They should have only come out on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's where, that's what.
So those other two, the only reason that they got taken out from my understanding is because they don't want them anymore.
Okay, so it's back, so if we, we, we approved to take them out on the twenty-eighth and if we would have stuck to that, like we, our motion was, this, we would have had this meeting and, and so they're all three still sitting downtown. Dirk wants his, so then we automatically would have then left the other two out because it's less work?
We probably would have, I probably would have asked for that because Wednesday is not going to be a pleasant day. We are also working hard on this, so.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
Not just the committee, we also have stuff to do.
I'm just walking through this. I mean, if we're sticking to our motion and our timetable, how would this have worked to have Dirk not requested?
If Dirk had not requested to keep it.
And if they had prematurely taken them out, we would have left all three, even though our motion said we were, so we were counter, we were saying we're going to do one thing and do another.
Well, if, if Dirk had not requested, all three would be, would should have been taken out on the twenty-eighth, not on Friday.
Well, because these three guys did it early to get caught up and Dirk requested, now we're going against the motion.
Well, what I'm understanding.
No, we're not, we haven't gone against anything yet.
I'm, I'm, I'm. I did a little.
But we haven't gone against it yet because we haven't decided anything yet.
I'm just saying, if every time we make a motion and then two months later, we have it on the agenda again, undo it, we're not making very good use of any of this time.
So on that point, as Dusty pointed out at our last meeting, we made a motion and passed an ordinance that prohibited any other outdoor service areas being approved after January first. And we went against both of, we went against that and we'll probably go against it later on the agenda. So I would argue that sometimes things do change.
Well, and, and, and I'm going to point this out. And I believe it was April, we approved a contract with RagBri. That contract was to pay the City of Animals the seven thousand five hundred dollars before the end of May. Seven thousand five hundred dollars before the end of June. We have not seen that money. So.
You guys pulled that good one. I'm just, in general.
I'm just saying.
Yes, like what you were saying from before, I just, in, I don't know, I'm used to my job, it's in writing, this is, this is, these are the terms and.
Well.
Just not just this, other things, I, I don't like it. I don't like that, you know, certain, some things in writing, it doesn't get, it's executed that way, I guess.
Well, and, and to that point, like I said, we were supposed to have fifteen thousand dollars by the end of June, which from my understanding went to RagBri direct, our committee here, but they never funneled it back to us. We still haven't received the five thousand dollars that we were supposed to have to retain. So I'm, you know, I'm on this trust thing right now.
Can I clear that up?
I would like to stay on topic, which is the parklet. The commitment for the financing is not, should not, and it should not be part of this discussion.
Agreed for now. I agree with that, but I spent, I don't know how to explain this. Let's just put it this way. I, I, I've got a business right now that we're booked out two years. I'm busier and crap, but I spent half my day looking into this parklet thing. And the one thing that I realized is it's not as important as the day of RagBri and the people coming in here. There, there's too much emphasis put on some rock setting out there with a canopy over it. And they said that, from what I understand, he was willing to leave the canopy out there for the people to come in. Not because it's his, but he was willing to leave that out there. I think we just need to let go of this. I will take blame for part of it because I voted yes on that. I didn't look far, that far forward. I was new at the game at that time anyway, and I'm still am, but, but like everybody's, you can't, you can't be a starched shirt all the time because sometimes you got to bend your arm. You got to reach back and scratch your back. Things change, like, like, like Rich said. Let's work together. Let's just get this done and do it right. It's out there. I think it's a good idea. I always have. I was surprised when they were being taken down. But I didn't say anything, but because it wasn't that important. It's not one of those battles that was worth fighting. And I don't think this one is either. You're going to have as much trouble getting around the, the vendors that you have on the street as you will those rocks there. It's the same, same scenario. So what do we do if you need to get a vendor in there? We move the vendors out that were in there so you get, so you have room? It's the same thing. It's, it's, it's just a poor argument. I spent a half a day chat, trying to figure this thing out. I wanted to make sure I was doing the right thing. And I suddenly realized that we're, it was, it's not worth the fight. Why are we sitting here arguing about it? It's not worth it.
When you have RagBri come through, you have businesses that come out in the street in front of their businesses, like Tucker's stuff. It seems to me during, I mean, but people come on in the vendor, they run a vendor space and they sell food out there.
They rent it.
But nobody's doing that during RagBri.
Yeah.
Salard is renting hers.
But not in the street, though, right?
Yes, in the street.
There's three or four of them, I think.
It's just, I see this foregone revenue as well. Although I guess we're past the deadline, so that's not as much, because it's more of a convenience if moving around at this point, if we were allowing vendors to come in, it would be.
Like you said, we're going to, this is going to happen no matter what. I think it is. Just let's make a decision. Let's move forward. Anybody around the table hasn't signed up to volunteer yet, let us know. We'll get you on our list. Let's move forward.
I volunteered a second time if I could, but I already did, so.
Well, good. We got you then. We got you.
The, the optics of this certainly, to me, can be brought into question. We've had a lengthy discussion on it. I believe at this point, it is time to make a decision. We can either stay the course and have it be removed as was decided prior, or we can move forward with the agenda item tonight with leaving the parklet in place.
I'm going to make a motion to leave the parklet in place. Now, second.
A motion by Rich, second by John, to leave the parklet in place that lies in front of Tyler and Downing. Any further council discussion?
I think we should stick to our first decision.
Is there any public comment outside of Leanna and Dusty with those that are in chambers?
Teresa Tuken, one oh two Holt Street. I am the owner of Tucker's Tavern. I'm just wondering why I have to pay ten percent of my outdoor sales back to the city. And there's other establishments now that can use their outdoor area without having to pay anything.
Who are you referring to?
Tyler and Downing's.
They don't have an outdoor, they're not using that outdoor area. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So on Thursday, when they're serving people outside, because I can see from my establishment. So what are we going to do with that then?
So that space is open to the public. It's open to the public. Your space will be fenced off and only available to your patrons.
No, everybody's welcome.
Okay, I understand that. He is not serving his patrons outside. Anybody can sit in there. It's not reserved. It's not fenced off. None of that.
So it would not be okay if his waiter waitress comes out and brings them food and or drink there?
It would not be okay if they did that.
It, it would, they have to get it, do a takeout.
It absolutely would not be okay.
They have to get it from inside.
But what would, what happens when they get served outside? Because I've not used.
They cannot be served outside.
On a normal night, like Rich, if you go there, do they come out and wait on you or do you got to take your food and bring it out?
They would come out, but as Betty had said, if it's part of your normal business, you don't have to pay the vendor fee. She stated that.
My understanding with that was if it's, yes, if it's, the product that you are selling is part of your everyday activity, I guess that's the way I.
Well, is not that part of their product?
But the space is not.
Yes, it is. If you, if her example was the food wagon at Family Foods when they were there, they only served, what, summer, maybe early fall, late spring?
Lunchtime.
At lunchtime, they served outside in the parking lot. That was part of their normal product. That was okay and they would not have had to pay the vendor fee. That was her example.
On private property.
So what's, what's the difference?
This is not private property. This is public property.
Yeah, but these guys aren't selling anything. And I want to correct that you're not paying the ten percent to the city. You're paying the ten percent to the RagBri committee. It's not to the city.
So I guess to try to inject some clarity there. One, I would expect the RagBri committee, if Dirk, Tyler and Downing is using the space for their own personal, that it would be ceased. I guess that's what I would expect.
I would want to know.
Because other vendors have paid for that space and in this case it would not.
He's under the understanding that it is not his during RagBri and I would want to know if he did that. I would want to know.
So how, what's our procedure? If, if, if that is seen, what, what's our, what program?
There are going to be so many people downtown that are going to be sitting everywhere. The chances of him being able to serve someone in that space are almost zero. I mean, I'm not sure I understand that argument, but.
And I, if, if that's the case, I think we ought to just have a letter written to him and say, there will be no outdoor service. Plain and simple.
Make sure it's legal that way.
Yeah, need to follow up on that.
Because like with alcohol, where's that fall, it's in the public area and it's.
Would the.
He can't serve alcohol out there.
Would the committee be responsible to walk in and give, have him sign a sheet stating that he's not responsible or is it the city that should be doing that? I'm just wondering.
Doesn't make any, I mean, we can, I'll be glad to have that.
I mean, it would make everybody feel better. Maybe it, we should make it on kind of legal.
I think it should be the city from the standpoint, it's our property.
Yeah, okay. Then we need to make that legal and just make sure that he signs a paper stating that.
Nancy Shaper, eight oh three North Division Court. I would just like to point out that last week, when all the parklets were out there, I saw somebody sitting in Dirk's parklet, having product from Grounds and Goodies. And Dirk was out there and he did not claim ownership of that parklet. And I don't think he ever has because I've seen people sitting there drinking Casey's coffee also. So Dirk has never claimed ownership on that. He's just decorated it, made it pretty. And, you know, if he got rid of the plants and the flowers, there'd be way more seating than a couple picnic tables that would fit in there. So they would sit on the, or the limestone blocks, too. My observation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy.
Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to provide comment that already hasn't? Rebecca, is there anyone virtual who would like to comment?
I have not seen anyone so far.
Again, we have a motion by Rich, second by John, to leave the parklet where it lies in front of Tyler and Downing. If there's no other council discussion, I will ask Beth at this time to conduct a roll.
Smith?
Yes.
Buckart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Epstein. Abstain.
Stout?
No.
Capron?
No.
Crump?
Yes.
The motion carries with three yes, two no, and one abstain. 8.7, resolution setting corrected salaries for fiscal year 2021, '22 for appointed officers and employees of the city of Anamosa, Iowa.
This one was my fault. I did not interpret the police contract correctly to, onto which part of the graph, or which part of the table they were on. So this is correcting my error on the last resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Galen, second by Rich, to approve the salaries for part-time employees. I'm on the wrong one, sorry about that. Motion by Galen, second by Rich, to approve corrected salaries for fiscal year 2021 for appointed officers and employees. Any additional council discussion? As this relates to employee matter, I will not be requesting or soliciting comment from the public. There's no further discussion, council discussion. Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion to approve salaries carried unanimously. 8.8, resolution approving the hiring and setting salaries of seasonal part-time employees for the Parks and Recreation Department for the 2021 summer season.
Sorry, move to approve.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Any council discussion? Same applies. This is an employee matter. Hearing no other council discussion, Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. 8.9, resolution setting date for public hearing on the application for community development block grant funds for housing rehabilitation for August 9, 2021. At 6:00 PM at the Anamosa Library and Learning Center.
This is just to reset the date. We set it previously to be at this meeting. We didn't have the amount of applications we were comfortable with to help hold the public hearing, so we're postponing it one meeting.
We don't have six yet?
We have, we had six, but one dropped off and we, we're still at five.
Is there a minimum or we just, a target to get to six?
The six is the number, the magic number for where you get the best consideration for your application.
I'll move, we set the date for the public hearing on the application for CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Rehabilitation for August 9, 2021 at 6:00 PM. In most library.
Second.
Is that you, John?
Yeah.
Thanks. Motion by Jeff, second by John. Further council discussion? Any public comment? Beth, is there like a game plan if we don't obtain the magic number six?
We'll just, we'll just probably postpone the public hearing again. We won't actually publish it until we have our six, so hopefully she has them this week. We'll find out. But yeah, we did check to see where they, where the state was at in their receipt of applications, so we should, we should be fine still. We were worried that it was filling up too fast, but.
Is there a hard deadline date or no?
No, really if we, if we ended up with 20 applications, kind of like downtown, we could just do, we could save some and do the grant application for a different year, so.
The sooner we get the sixth, the better.
Yeah, just because it's first come, first served on the grant award.
Spread the word.
Yes.
Was there any possible sixth?
I believe so, because I did have someone come in and I helped them get everything together and got them in touch with Tracy. So I'm hoping that one went through and that might have been our sixth one.
Good. Yeah, it's certainly something I would, I would hope that would be taken advantage of. Again, we have a motion by Jeff, second by John, to hold, hold that public hearing on August 9. Beth, would you conduct a roll vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.10, resolution hiring and setting salary for wastewater trainee.
Move to approve.
Second.
This brings them up to the number of people that are supposed to be down there, correct?
Correct.
We have a motion by Rich, second by Alan. Council discussion? Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Muckart?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Why you keep calling me last?
I don't know. I, I've noticed that. I'm ending up on you. I'll try and change it up on the next one.
Save the best for last.
Motion to approve salary carried unanimous. 8.11, discussion and possible action on the appointment of Jeff Wilken to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Galen, I'm giving that one to you. Did you second it?
No.
I thought I heard two.
The guy without a beard seconded it.
My apologies.
That's all right. I'm kind of quiet tonight.
A motion by Rich, second by Alan. Council discussion?
We're still short on the, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so you know of other people.
How many vacancies?
I believe we have two.
Still have two?
Yep.
How are they operating under a quorum?
This will fill one. We need one more, but I think there's someone else that would like to leave this summer. So we would take two applications if we could get them.
With their previous planning zoning meeting, earlier in this council meeting, they had approved some. Did they have a quorum?
They did have a quorum there. We would not have had a meeting with a motion without a quorum. Yes, there was a quorum. It was just barely, yes.
Any public comment on this agenda item?
Spread the word again.
Yes.
Beth, would you conduct a roll vote, please?
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Jeff to the Planning and Zoning Commission carried unanimously. 8.12, second reading of an ordinance amending section 95.06 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Anamosa, Iowa. And adding section 90.10, item three, to require annexation as a condition for connection. The city sanitation, sanitary sewer service and water work system.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Galen. Further council discussion?
Have you had any?
I haven't had any commentary.
From anybody? Okay.
Any public comment? Beth, please conduct a roll vote.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.12, item one, possible motion to give final consideration and adoption of ordinance. Also known as leaving the third reading. Not hearing a motion. I'm moving, I'll move on to 8.13. Resolution approving a settlement and release agreement for property at 201 West Walnut Street, Anamosa, Iowa.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Alan. No further council discussion? So this, this is one that the structure on that location will need to come down?
More than likely.
Is the city acquired expense to bring this into its possession?
As far as.
Will, won't the city then be the owner of that property?
We will be the owner of that property through, it's through municipal infraction. So, yes, we have expended expense to get to this point, but it was in pursuit of a municipal infraction and code violation, so. Maybe we haven't had a chance to even look inside of the building. We don't know the condition of the building at this point. That would need to be assessed. This is just for us to take possession of it. That was the settlement in lieu of going to court for possible fines. They have decided to surrender the property to the city.
Further council discussion?
Have, have we looked at this building to know if underneath the siding or anything, there potentially could be any asbestos?
We do not know that.
Okay.
But we could still sell it as is if we so chose, could we not?
We absolutely could.
Flaptonate billions are in high demand.
Any, any public comment? Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.14, review and approval of extended outdoor service area request for the Anamosa Bowling Center liquor license on July 29, 2021 for RagBri event.
I was informed in writing from Leanna that they also had agreed to do the 10% of their outdoor service area sales as requested.
So move.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Kay. Further council discussion? Public comment? Beth?
Capron?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.15, review and approval of premise update for liquor license for Giggle Juice Liquor Station LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Alan. Council discussion?
So just putting a counter in that one?
Yep. So yeah, they're, they're just change, they're just adding a plate, like a checkout stand.
Like a second checkout is, was it just one?
Inside of the structure.
Inside of the structure, correct. But it caused a change to her premise plan that's submitted to the state, so she submitted it to the state through the change.
No further council discussion? Public comment? Beth?
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.16, review and approval of liquor license renewal for Dollar General store number 3685.
Move to approve, second.
Who was Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for being second, Rich. Motion by Jeff, second by Rich. Further council discussion? Public comment? Beth?
Muckart?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. 8.17, review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by John. Council discussion?
I do, what's this RagBri vest?
Those were some vests that the police department had to purchase for the event. I think they're just the, are they just the yellow? Yeah.
Okay. But these are something you can use later on? Okay.
Need further question on the bills? Any public comment? Beth?
Smith?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Crump?
Yes.
Muckart?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of bills carried unanimous. 9.0, city administrators report.
So we've been busy planning, of course, this week. We're gonna have one last meeting tomorrow. Just to make sure we're all on the same page and going, getting everything done that needs to be done for Thursday. We do have, I think everything's pretty well planned out for who's coming in when, and we are gonna have some early mornings so we can get things picked up and back to normal as best we can on Friday morning. Other than that, it's just been really busy.
Inside and out.
Yep.
Also have any questions for Beth?
You were gonna talk about the meeting here, August?
Oh, yes, August 11th. We're having our open house for the Sycamore Street projects, or no, for the 150, Highway 151. Now I'm gonna have them here for the wrong thing, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. We've got a lot of projects going on right now too, so.
No, there will be engineers here then explaining or?
They will be, yes. So they'll have blown up plans for everything too, so.
And you did say the 151 project.
The 151 project.
The frying broat.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for Beth? Thanks for that report, Beth. 10.0 Mayor and Council reports, 10.1 Mayor's report. I know volunteers are still in need for RagBri, so if there's anyone that has free time to give on Thursday, you could please reach out to Leanna Boone, Dusty Embry, or Betty Wymer, they would appreciate it. Have no other comments? 10.2 Council reports?
I would like to salute Rebecca for filling out information on the American Rescue Plan Act and getting a $5,000 grant for geothermal and filter for the library, excuse me.
Thanks, Kay. Rebecca, thank you for taking that initiative to submit.
Not a problem.
Any other reports? 11.0 Public comment for items not on the agenda. We'll start with anyone in council chambers. Rebecca, is there anyone virtually who would like to discuss with council?
I do not see anybody.
Hearing none, 12.0 Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan, all in favor signify with a aye. No, nay. Motion to adjourn carried unanimous.